Yes, we are live.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I would like to lead us in prayer if everyone would join me in prayer. Lord, we just thank you for this day. God, we thank you, Lord, for what we're able to do even though we're not able to meet together. Lord, able to handle the county's business using the internet and using technology, we pray will give us guidance, help us to make the best decisions for all our citizens. And just watch over our families throughout this COVID-19 situation. Protect us from harm, we pray in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, I have a flag behind me on the porch and if you have one, look toward it, but let's say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic. Which is standing. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and... Thank you. With that, Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Michael Bell. Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap. David Dunlap.
I believe he's dropped off right now, Lisa.
Okay. Randy England.
I'm here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Present.
Robert.
Here.
Lori Jenkins. Here. Ron Lee.
Present.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Hey, Tyrone Sparkman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Lane Wiltshire.
Here.
David Dunlap.
I don't see him up there, Lisa. He might join us later.
Okay, I'm just gonna mark him present because he's, I know he's there.
Yeah, I texted him.
Okay.
At this time, I would, or I'm sorry, Lisa, how many, did you, you're gonna count all 24 present?
Well, there's 23 of us, 23 of you now.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead now if someone would like to. I need a motion to accept or adopt the docket.
So moved.
I make that motion.
Motion in a second. Would anybody like to speak to that motion? Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the docket. Item number seven, Amendment GFFY 1920-16. There was, that is a $1,250 match grant for a fuel farm at the airport. There was also an additional $4,500 for some obstruction clearing that was included in that amendment that was inadvertently left off, and I move that that be added.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Taylor.
From Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye. Is there any opposed? All right, with no opposed, then we'll go back to the adoption of the docket. We just voted to amend the docket to add that, so we need a motion to accept the docket.
I'm gonna get motion.
Have a motion from Tyrone Sparkman. Do I have a second?
I'm gonna take a second, second.
All right, I believe Commissioner Carly Bolden seconded that. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, with a reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion and we dispense, you know, the minutes and approve them as given.
We have a motion. I believe Stephen Hilton was first on that. I have a motion from Commissioner Hilton to accept the minutes and dispense of the reading of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Steve Glenn, second that motion.
All right, second from Commissioner Glenn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And I'm not aware of any public comments. Executive Haley, are there any public comments?
There have been none submitted to my office.
All right, so we'll move on to employee recognition.
There is one employee recognition that I can do now, or we can wait under announcements, whatever is the wishes of the chairman.
It's entirely up to you, Executive Haley. You can do it whenever you want.
Well, I would like to recognize Bobby Cox, our retiring director of schools. So I do have a proclamation. I think he's joined us tonight. So I'd like to read this proclamation and enter it into the minutes. Whereas John Robert Bobby Cox, son of the late John and Catherine Cox, is a McMemville, Tennessee native, who has shown exceptional leadership as director of Warren County Schools. Whereas during Mr. Cox's tenure of 29 years in the Warren County School System, he has served in many roles, including classroom teacher, coach, supervisor, and director of schools. Whereas over the course of his career, Mr. Cox has been recognized by many state and national organizations and received many honors, including the seven AAA Baseball Coach of the Year Outstanding Service Award, the Tennessee Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development Education, I mean Board of Directors, Upper Cumberland Regional Supervisor of the Year, Tennessee Department of Education Supervisor of the Year, Tennessee Athletic Association AF Bridges Sportsmanship Award for School Administrator of the Year, and the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendent Superintendent of the Year. Whereas since 2012, as Director of Schools, Bobby Cox has served his hometown well by upgrading school facilities, promoting primary and secondary school programs, fostering a level of achievement for both our school system and its board through his membership in multiple state and national organizations. He is professionally involved in educational initiatives across the region. Whereas over the last eight years, Director Cox has emphasized both academics and technical education programs throughout the county, reaching achievement records and delivering standards of excellence in literacy, graduation and attendance rates, CTE programs, mechatronics and robotics training, dual enrollment and AP offerings at Warren County High School. Whereas Mr. Cox's family, his wife Letitia and daughters Lindsay and Savannah, have played an integral role in his success by supporting his tireless efforts to raise educational standards and invest in the future of Warren County. Whereas this outstanding community leader and respected educator has impacted the lives of many and successfully fulfilled his road rec pledge of placing service above self. Whereas it is only befitting that a grateful community should recognize this man's career achievements and acknowledge how he has crafted the course of education for generations to come. Therefore, I, Warren County Executive Jimmy Haley, and members of this legislative body wish to honor Mr. Bobby Cox on his years of service to our educational system, wish him well in his retirement and all other future endeavors. So I want to thank Mr. Cox and his efforts across the years. He's been an exceptional team player. He has made an impact on the lives of children and teachers and programs that will be felt for generations to come. And so I would like to honor Mr. Cox tonight in front of the legislative body and commend him on all the years of service and then what's next in his career. I think Mr. Grant Swallows, who will also be Director of Schools coming up, may be listening today. So I would also like to introduce him to the legislative body if he's joined us. If not, he'll be in my Zoom, I've been live streaming TV show tomorrow where all of the commissioners can watch him live. Mr. Cox, you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Haley. I appreciate those kind words and appreciate the honor that I've had to work with County Commission and those in our school system and, you know, more importantly, and especially the the teachers and the students of Warren County. It's been my distinct honor and privilege to serve them as long, for the 29 years that I served in the school system and also our board of education and, you know, I think working with you all as county commissioners, we've done great things to improve our buildings to improve education in Warren County. And I know Mr. Swallows will take us to new heights and I welcome him aboard and hope that he is given the same opportunity to work with this commission that I have. It's been, again, a great opportunity and just, again, thank you for the kind words. They're undeserved and a team effort. But, you know, I credit all those who I've been able to work with for all the success we've had. So thank you all again and again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you as well. I don't know whether Mr. Swallows would like to join in and let me introduce him, or he would like to say something about himself.
I don't know if he's on or not.
I'm not sure either. If not, we'll do this tomorrow. So thank you, Mr. Cox, for all your efforts. We'll miss you, but we got new things coming up. And Mr. Swallows' leadership will take us even to greater, greater places for our children and our teachers and our school system. So thank you for being a team player and thank you for all the things that you've done for the county and this commission over the course of your, of your career.
Thank you. Thank you all again.
Thank you. David Dunlap has joined us back, Lisa. David, are you still there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, all right, next is the elected officials report and first is the county executives report.
My executive report was emailed out today, so I waited for some updates. And so it, it is your pleasure to read over. If you've got any questions, you can come back tomorrow, the next few days and ask me about it. This is basically giving you a progress report on what we've done over the last month. So, thank you.
Thank you, Executive Haley. And as we did last month, unless someone has an objection, we will not do the department report. I know Levy's not gonna be able to join us tonight. If there is no objections to that, then we will bypass the committee or the official, elected official and department reports.
Lane.
Yes, Commissioner Savage.
For me, he said if anybody had any questions, they were mowing and going about their day to day, the new truck. Anybody had any questions, just call the office.
Thank you, Commissioner Prater. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept all these reports as presented and waive the reading of those. We have a motion.
I make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ruble. Do we have a second? Carly, are you wanting to second that motion?
Yes, sir, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, there's none opposed. A motion carries. Next, committee reports and unless someone has something specific to a committee to report, we can do the same with that, but I know, I believe Robert Hennessy has something to report with building and grounds.
Yes, sir, thank you for your time and thank you fellow commissioners. Just wanted to give you update. I thought this was important. Last couple of weeks ago, we met with the Health and Welfare Committee in regards to the Animal Control Center. The building is grounds is taking action and we do have a punch list of things that are critical need at this point in time that we're gonna address immediately starting this week. The appropriation of the funds for that will be coming out of the maintenance fund of the buildings and grounds to cover a percentage of these requests and also had an opportunity to visit the site where the proposed expansion is gonna be laid out. And there's been some discussion on that and we're gonna be moving forward with this and doing all, taking all the corrective measures within the next couple of weeks. I just thought it would be important to let the other commissioners know where we were at currently on this progress with this Animal Control Center. Also, one quick note, as you noticed, maybe passing by in Locust Street. Thanks to the city of McMemville, they're taking the initiative to go ahead and remove the existing sidewalk. We will have a new sidewalk and entrance to our facility. Also, a sidewalk going from the sidewalk along the street well, streetway up to the front of the building. So whenever we're attending our meetings at night, we'll have a nice clean walkway to walk on and be safe for everyone. And discussion has been made about having a stripe across the road for a desk crossway, but that's all I have to report right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. If there's no other items to be brought up during committee reports and there's no old business, I would move into the new business. And item number one is Resolution Number 9-2020, and that is to address the District Three Commission vacancy. Motion to approve. Motion to approve what?
You skipped number one, Blaine.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought you were on number one. I was on number one. I actually read it out, but I read the wrong title. You're correct, Commissioner Ruble. Resolution Number 9-2020, and you made a motion to approve? Yes, sir, move to adopt.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hennessy. And this will be a voice vote. So Lisa, would you call the roll, please? Mr. Chairman, if you would, Justin can explain this a little bit. I know there have been several questions about this and I've had some myself and I think Justin can clarify a little if he would speak to this motion. That'd be great.
Thank you. Um, this is a result of the 1990 bond issue that the county did on behalf of West Warren Viola in order to facilitate Bridgestone moving to the county. The original contract said that West Warren would pay it back as a percentage of Bridgestone's bill. And they stepped to that. One small piece of the contract also said that they would benefit from any interest reductions that the county benefited during the life of the, the bond. In that vein, in 97, the county refinanced the debt to lower the interest rates and then the county paid it off early in 2005. And the outstanding balance on our balance sheet is a result of those two reductions in interest from the original terms of the bond issue.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dun.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Jenkins.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
B. Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Yes.
Joseph Stott.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Lane. Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 yes. Now we're back on item number two, which is address District Three Commission vacancy.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to that.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes, I think since this is just for two months, I make a motion that we leave the District Three Commission seat vacant and let the voters decide.
I second that.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bell and a second from Commissioner Ross. Would anybody like to speak to that motion? All right, I believe we can do a voice vote if there's no, no, no vote to this. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries 23-0. Next, item is item number three. Address Committee vacancies as a result of District, District Three Commission vacancy.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ross.
Looking at the financial management position, is that, that financial management and what is the other one that's left open?
Building and grounds.
Building and grounds. I would like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Ron Lee for financial management.
We have a motion for Commissioner Ron Lee.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Robert Hennessy. Is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Blaine Wiltshire, this Carl D. Bolden.
All right, we have a nomination for me from Carl D. Bolden.
Second.
We have a second. I believe that was from Commissioner Judkins.
Yes.
Any other nominations? Mr. Chairman, I make motion that nomination cease. We have a motion that nomination cease.
I second that motion.
We have a second from Commissioner Bell. Anybody want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
We need to hear from both of the nominees that they accept the motions.
I accept.
The nominations, excuse me, the nominations.
I accept the nomination. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I'd be glad to help you if I could.
All right. Now we have a motion and a second that the nomination cease. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, Lisa, are you ready for this?
Yes.
Okay.
What's gonna be the process here?
Well, we have to have 12 votes. We have to have a majority and that's 12 since we only have 23 commissioners. And I'm assuming, Lisa, you'll start with the first one nominated, which was Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And we'll only go by one person.
All right, everybody ready?
This is a vote for Commissioner Ron Lee, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Michael.
Aye.
Carl D.
Aye.
Carl E. Bolden.
Aye.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Aye.
Randy England.
Aye.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Richard.
Stephen Hilton, no.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Jenkins.
Pass.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
No.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Pass.
Tommy Savage.
Aye.
Sparkman.
No.
Stotts.
No.
Philip Stout.
Aye.
Cole Taylor.
Aye.
Lane Wiltshire.
Aye.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Congratulations, Blaine.
We hadn't voted yet.
Well, it's obvious what it is.
All right, this is for Blaine. Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes. Yes.
Joseph Stott.
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Yes.
B. Savage.
Yes.
Ruble.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Pass.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Aye.
Ron Lee.
Aye.
Lori Jenkins.
Yes.
Robert Henness.
Aye.
My off, don't look at me.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Aye.
Deborah Evans.
Pass.
Randy England.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Pass.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Okay, Ron Lee got eight votes. Blaine Wiltshire, 15 votes, yes.
All right, next item is the Building and Grounds Committee vacancy. And as District Four Commissioner, I would like to nominate Tommy Savage for that position.
I'll second it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Tommy Savage. Are there any other nominations?
I make a motion, we cease nominations and let by acclamation.
We have that motion.
I second.
We have a second by Commissioner Bell. Does anybody want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Commissioner Savage.
Wiltshire, we do need to verify that he accepts the position.
I do accept, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hilton. Next item is item number four, Resolution Number 10-2020, a resolution to accept the Warren County School System federal programs budget as presented by the appropriate federal agencies without requiring approval.
I second.
I believe Michael Bell, Commissioner Bell made the motion and I believe the second was Commissioner Judkins, is that correct?
Carleen Brown.
Okay, Commissioner Brown, I apologize.
That's okay.
Does anybody want to speak to that motion? Does anybody want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would add a little to that. That is, that's a regulation that we pass every year. We've been doing it, I think Justin said, for about the past eight years. And what this does is give the school system the authority to spend this money without legislative approval. There's quite a bit of upside in this month. It is spent wisely, but it just streamlines the process. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion and second?
I think I have a conflict of interest in this, so I won't vote on this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Judkins? Anyone else? Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori, I'm just going to put you down as pass.
Okay.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owen.
Yes.
Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Spartman.
Yes.
Stotts.
Yes.
Phillip Stout.
Yes, yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item is item number five. This is the ESS South Central LLC contract for Warren County Schools. It's a three-year contract for special two teacher services.
Motion approved.
Second. To approve by Commissioner Ruble. We have a second by, I didn't see who seconded that.
Robert.
Commissioner Hennessy, would anybody like to speak to that motion or have any information to add?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hilton here. I would like some clarification. Is this a new service or just an extenuation of the current services?
New service.
This is our contract, Mr. Hilton, with Kelly Services ended, ends on June thirtieth. We rebid this. We had five bidders, and it was chosen that ESS was the best product. Thank you, Director Cox. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone, anything else before we vote?
Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir.
Have you talked to any other school systems that have used this service?
Yes, sir. Wilson County is currently using them, Anderson County, Bedford County. I think there's about ten other school districts that are using those. We checked those three references and got all positive references on the company. And they are based out of Tennessee, so their home office is in Knoxville, and we've got customer representatives in Lebanon and in Chattanooga.
Okay, are they going to take care of our substitutes comparable to what the services we had? Is it going to be better?
Well, I hope it's, you know, at least or better. You know, really, we're hoping that it's better, better service than we have had, that we felt like that this company was the best. And they will be hiring a local person that'll be staffing all of our subs here, and it will be a local person stationed here.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Savage, and thank you, Mr. Cox. Lisa, if you would, call the roll, please.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Judkins.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes, ma'am.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you, motion passes twenty-three, yes. Next item is number six. This is the Airport Grant Acceptance Cares Act grant through the Federal Aviation Administration and/or T-DAR Aeronautics. And I believe Commissioner Ruble, do you have anything to add to this?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hennessy. Does anybody want to speak to that motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this basically is CARE Act money. This amendment is GF-FY nineteen twenty seventeen. And what this is, is thirty thousand dollars COVID-nineteen CARE Act, whatever you would label it, but it is thirty thousand dollars and it is for airport improvement. And this is pass-through money. There's no five percent match. It's a hundred percent. This is just passed through the budget, but we've got to approve it for the airport to receive it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ruble. Anyone else want to speak to that motion? If not, Lisa, call the roll, please.
Michael.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown. Carleen Brown.
She's.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Judkins.
Yes.
Ron Lee. Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spart.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Change your vote. Twenty-three, yes.
Motion passes twenty-three, yes. Next item is item number seven, and that is the grant approval for the amendment. And I know Commissioner Ruble had spoke to that earlier in the, as we were adopting the docket.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble to adopt.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hennessy. Would anybody like to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is match grant funding, and it, like, both of these are five percent match. The first, the twelve-hundred-and-fifty is going to be for the fuel farm, and that is a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant. And the additional forty-five-hundred is for some obstruction clearance, and that is a total of ninety thousand dollars on that one, and our match is forty-five-hundred. So the total on that one is going to be fifty-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and the, that will be a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars total, minus the match money. That passed budget finance and financial management unanimously, and that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Judkins.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owen.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty.
Motion passes twenty-three, yes. Next item is approval of notaries. Ms. Scott?
Here's the list for the, Ally Beth Young, Ashley Penninger, Thomas O. Bratcher, Jennifer Grissom, and Hannah Michelle Johnson.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion from Commissioner England.
Second, Commissioner Hilton.
We have a second from Commissioner Hilton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, under announcements, Executive Haley?
We have two appointments to basically put into the minutes for the West Warren Valley Utility District for two vacancies. And Steve Stubblefield will be, will be filling the position for Warren County, and Lowell Duke will, from Coffee County. Those documents have been signed and delivered to the utility district, so they need to be entered into the minutes.
Who did you say would be?
Steve Stubblefield and Lowell Duke.
Commissioner Wiltshire. Chairman Wiltshire, can you hear me? I think you're muted, Chairman Wiltshire.
You're right, Commissioner Hilton.
I do have one question regarding, actually, I've got two questions. I was wanting to see if Director Cotton could tell us about our budget process this year, what the process is going to be with the government, and these meetings and stuff. I don't know if we could speak to that, sort of get us up to speed on what the process is going to be.
From appointments now, we've got acknowledgement of the sales tax. Our VAULA request for this needs to be brought up under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, let's, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and get a motion and a second for that, and then we'll get back to.
You don't need a motion for my appointments. Those are already done. They just had to be entered into the minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Cotton may want to announce about the sales tax requests from the city of VAULA. It has to be announced. I think it was in the packet.
Yes, the city of VAULA has, up to this point, not received any sales tax for any collections within the city limits of VAULA. They had to submit a formal request to begin receiving that from the state, and they have begun that process. I believe when Centertown did the same thing several years ago, it was read into the minutes for the county commission, so we're following suit or precedent with VAULA.
Thank you, Director Cotton. Do you have any information that pertains to Commissioner Hilton's question about the budgets?
Yes, the majority of the budgets are in. The schedule of how they will be reviewed is really up to budget and finance, but we have a majority of them in at this time. And in the next several weeks, we're going to start reviewing those as the committee deems, deems fit.
Director Cotton, at what point will us commissioners be able to see those preliminary budgets?
At any point that you request them, I can, I mean, I can email them out to anyone who would like to see them.
I think it would be a good idea, especially for those committees that are involved in those departments, to be able to see them as soon as possible.
I can send, I can email those out tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. And if, if any changes happen, then I'll email out whatever revisions are submitted.
Hey, this is Gary Prater. We're having a highway and bridge meeting tomorrow at four o'clock to go over our budget, so we will have.
Thank you, Mr. Prater, Commissioner Prater for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Brown.
I also wanted to make sure that everyone was aware tomorrow night at the education meeting, which is at six o'clock. Joe Harvey has prepared a video of the West Elementary School project, and since we can't go and tour things now, and you may really enjoy watching that tomorrow night. And there was one thing that Mr. Cox didn't have a chance to add to his report earlier, and that was in the month of April, the savings for the utilities was fifty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cent. So that's a positive thing that actually has come from us being close for the school system, so I wanted to make sure that was included tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say, you probably noticed the Habitat Day for the elected officials will not happen this year due to the COVID-nineteen situation. The workers that are dedicated to that build are going to finish that house, and appreciate Gary Prater for being willing to donate food for that, but we'll try to get back to that next year. And I want to say, in case this is our last or one of our last meetings, thank you for all your patience. I know I've made quite a few mistakes. Thank you, Commissioner Hilton, for noticing I was muted. We're getting used to this unnormal way of operating, but I'm actually looking forward to being back in a room with all of y'all.
Me, too.
Mr. Chairman?
Amen.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I am so excited to be getting back maybe next month to see everybody. I'm about burnt out on this internet stuff.
Amen.
Chairman Wiltshire, I do have one other question I would like to ask. It's been asked to me numerous times about our services, you know, namely like the tags, you know, we're seeing lines wrapped all the way around the building at lunch and because of limited services. When can we expect to be able to get normal hours, you know, in those offices for our citizens here?
Executive Haley, have you got anything on that?
Yes, I do. The window is open Monday through Friday, eight a.m. to regular business hours, four-thirty and five on Friday, and so the window's been open now for over a week. We are, have access to the building on Tuesdays and Thursdays by appointment, and so all you have to do is call those offices. As far as the drive-through window, the state of Tennessee extended the deadline for renewing your tags to June fifteenth. And so we want to thank everybody that's, that jumped ahead and already wants to renew June, but, you know, if you will, if you will be patient and do what the state asks, you can go online, you can do it in the Dropbox as well. If you've got passports or business license, you are admitted into the building by appointment. The office hours that were chosen to protect our employees, which is the safety and liability of the county, is number one. The, the elected officials and the directors ask for this schedule, and so we're doing it on the request also with the state of Tennessee and the governor. They've not yet opened up their offices yet, but hopefully June first is what we're shooting for, and that's what, what we're waiting for the governor to give us some direction on that. And so that hopefully on June the first, we'll be open to regular business hours again, but there will be monitoring and checking the people coming into the building, and some things might be restricted on the number of public meetings that are held within our building. We've had six-hundred-and- We've had 623 new cases across the state of Tennessee. That was a huge spike today. And so I've been working with David Britton to put together a policy when we do reopen the building again. But once again, the biggest thing is protecting the liability of the county and the liability of our employees. And so we've had essential services open, the courthouse. We've had to use the, the direction of the Supreme Court Justice Bivens on the hours of operation at the courthouse, and so we've had to slowly open those up upon that direction. And so it's not being an easy task, but the plans are in place, hopefully to go back on June the 1st to regular meetings. We will await the governor in his direction and executive orders, pardon the Tennessee pledge, in order to do so.
Thank you, Executive Haley. If there's no other announcement.
Chairman Wiltshire, can I ask something?
Yes, Commissioner England, go ahead.
If you don't know, I'll pass this on to Executive Haley, but I'd like to know what is going on with our airport. I understand that we've lost our director. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
It's in my executive report. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Crawford resigned, and right now, the airport commission appointed Dr. Mike Roberts to be the interim director at the airport until they choose a successor.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify. I had heard it. I just wanted to make sure it was true.
It's in my executive report, but thank you for reminding me to remind you that it's, it's in that report. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tommy Savage.
Yes, Commissioner Savage.
This question is for Director Cotton. Could some of us commissioners that want to get these budgets on hard copy, could we just call his office and?
Yes, if you need a hard copy, you can either email me or call the office and leave a message, and we'll get one printed off for you. We've got about 50 to 60 pages right now, not counting the schools, so it takes a few minutes to run those copies.
You can set them out there, much like they do the packs for the county commission meetings.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you a call tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Hilton.
I second that.
We have a motion for Commissioner Stout, a second from Commissioner Hilton. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Nobody, nobody is opposed, correct? All right.
No, but Steve Hilton needs to get a haircut.
Okay. With that, we'll go.